Have a good coffee, so just have a seat and make yourself comfortable.
That's not me.
No, anything but. Okey dokey, well, we've had a chance for wee caffeine break, so which I hope is helpful for our next inquiry participant who'd like to welcome to our hearings. Thank you for joining us. If you wouldn't mind just stating your name and the organisation that you represent for the purposes of the transcript recording or voice recognition. And then if you wouldn't like, wouldn't mind making a few brief opening remarks and then we'll get into a bit of a chat and some questions.
Great, thank you. It's Simon O'Connor, the CEO of the Responsible Investment Association Australasia. And thank you for the opportunity to be able to be here today and present today. We'd like to make an opening statement and just firstly to really welcome the draft report from the Productivity Commission. And we really welcome its focus on the efficiency and effectiveness and competitiveness, but importantly, with the ultimate focus of that being on improving outcomes for members. That's where we come from for today's contribution. Just by way of background, the Responsible Investment Association, we are a peak body of responsible, ethical and impact investors across Australia and New Zealand. We have around 220 member investment organisations who manage in the order of $9 trillion of assets under management globally. Our members include about 21 superannuation funds, including about 15 of APRA's largest 50 regulated funds. So interestingly, our membership in the superannuation industry is across industry, not-for-profit funds, public funds, retail funds, bank-owned, smaller retail funds as well. So a cross-section of funds to which we are presenting today. So as I said, you know, we believe this focus on improving outcomes for members is really important. And I wanted to, I guess, contribute today some additional considerations that we think it's important that the Productivity Commission keep on its radar in its final recommendations from the report. So we believe really importantly that as at today, it's very clear that to be delivering on the promise of stronger performance and stronger outcomes for members, it is critical that superannuation funds and other institutional investors are considering issues that traditionally have been deemed as non-financial, that is environmental issues, social issues, corporate governance issues, what we call responsible investment, that is a systematic approach to understanding these issues that are traditionally not found on the financial statements of the assets they're invested within. And I want to support that by saying that, you know, any, any part of improving the superannuation system in Australia really needs responsible investment to be considered as a core component of leading practice. For one very importantly, this is all about underpinning strong investment outcomes and strong financial performance. And so the reason today in Australia where one in every two dollars invested has committed to responsible investing, you've got 80% of the top 50 largest super funds in Australia have committed publicly to responsible investing, is because understanding these factors are driving investment outcomes and returns. And so to not be considering these environmental, social and corporate governance issues really blinkers as an investment outcome and prevents really the strong delivery of performance outcomes for Australians. I also note that when looking at the top 10 performing super funds in Australia, based on analysis of 10-year returns, you find eight out of 10 of those have strong public commitments to responsible investment. When you look at the 10 worst performing funds, none of those have any consideration of responsible investment as a, as a process that they're considering. So there is a strong body now of empirical evidence to support this, that it helps to inform better investment decisions. And I'm very happy to sort of refer to those or probably put them in a submission in support of this. And it's interesting to note how this is flowing through now, where we have some of Australia's regulators talking to these issues, signalling that these are important issues that trustees and the corporate directors are considering. That's climate change risk, acknowledging that those have become part of a core financial stability type issue for, for Australia. And this is absolutely core to long-term investors who are investing over decades on behalf of their members. Our members understand that and I think it's really important that this is built into any consideration about a strong superannuation system. Interestingly, the UK and EU are both starting to legislate to this effect to require pension funds to consider these issues and to report on how they're considering them. Secondly, it's really when we come to, when we talk about meeting the expectations of consumers and our members and Australians, it's really equally important to understand that we're investing in a manner that is consistent with the values of Australians. And that effectively means investors ensuring that they're avoiding doing harm in the way they're investing. And I think we've seen a large amount of consumer research, including our own, that's indicated a vast majority of Australians expect their super to be invested in a way that as a minimum does no harm. We've got statistics from our own consumer research that nine in 10 Australians are expecting their super is invested responsibly and ethically. Seven in 10 Australians would rather invest in a responsible super fund that considers environmental, social and governance issues as opposed to a super fund which considers only maximising financial returns. And I note and I emphasise that this is not a trade-off between returns and responsible investment, as I mentioned earlier. But we're seeing this desire by Australians feed through to the superannuation fund industry. It is one part of the reason why in the last three years, we've seen about 35 of our major funds divest tobacco stocks from a realisation that Australians ultimately do not want to build their retirement savings off the basis of investments that do harm and actually worsen the world they're likely to retire into. So, so these are important considerations in terms of delivering on the performance outcomes and meeting member expectations. And really my purpose for coming today was to ensure that that is fully considered in the Productivity Commission's final recommendations. How this flows through, I guess specifically to your recommendations, in terms of allocated defaults, we don't intend to be giving you an assessment of whether, you know, one particular model is better than another. But what we do intend to stress is that any future model should require responsible investment as a critical criteria of assessment for eligibility. And we have the, the knowledge now that this is all about delivering on returns and member outcomes, so we think that's critical. Member engagement, we agree with the conclusion from the Productivity Commission that members need better, not more information, but we would add to that more relevant information. And I think there's a number of good, solid examples now where a way of engaging Australians in their superannuation is to talk about the issues that Australians care deeply about. And there's a number of funds using responsible investment as a tool to enhance and improve engagement, to then talk through more financial literacy type, type issues around risk returns, et cetera. But responsible investment can be a great conduit to building that engagement. And as a result, we see some of Australia's fastest growing super funds are those who talk very forthright around their responsible investment practices. Dashboards, we think should be enhanced. There are no important elements of the dashboards and transparency requirements such as portfolio holdings requirements have been deferred in legislation a number of times now. So we think this is an important part of it and requiring meaningful disclosures are a part of that. And so that's sort of some of the elements as to how we think this feeds through. And I just wanted to start with that as an opening statement. Thanks.
Thanks very much, Simon, and we do appreciate your interest in our inquiry. And having known a little bit about the beginnings of ESG and the investments community in my previous life and incarnation, and seeing how it plays through to the risks around cash flows of long-term investments, particularly in the infrastructure space. So I guess where the evidence that you point to and it's evidence that would be good for us to have a closer look at, because certainly my understanding of it's now quite dated, is this correlation between long-term net investment performance and responsible investment. And responsible investment, I think people see that as a, as a broad umbrella term, but I probably don't. So correct me if I'm wrong, it's really where when you're as a, as an investor, institutional investor, looking at building out a portfolio over time, you're looking at very explicit factor risk exposures and ESG are very critical factor risk exposures to take into account. So it's really like the micro that's needed underneath a strategic asset allocation. So within each asset class, you're conscious of what factor risk exposures you've got, whether they be environment, social and governance. Is that kind of right?
That's spot on and yeah, that's, that's right. And I think there's both the micro element, but the macro thematic elements that also influence portfolio allocation.
So where it's helpful for us then to know, understand that evidence is when we're looking at best-in-show and my super authorisation, which are kind of like the two quality filters that we're looking at applying, one for top performing and one for good performing. At the moment, one of the most heavily weighted criteria for both is really net investment performance over time. Easier to do for best-in-show. For my super authorisation, it's through an elevated outcomes test, although we've identified elevating that further with saying, you know, if you don't meet your benchmark portfolio going forward over five years and you miss business line of performance by 25 basis points, then, you know, maybe you shouldn't keep my super authorisation. So, so for us, it's sort of identifying, is the net investment performance over time enough of a guide to, to, to capture people that are doing that sort of more responsible bespoke portfolio construction, which it should be. And that's why we look at the evidence. Or do we need to be, go further and be more prescriptive for best-in-show? That, that there would be an expectation, although not mandated, that they would be ESG sensitive or responsible investment in their investment strategy. So we do identify investment strategies. So I think the one thing that would be helpful for us going forward is, there's about a page in our default chapter where we talk about our principles for guiding the best-in-show determination. Be great if you had a look at that and then also shared the evidence that got on the correlation to see whether we need to do anything further in your thinking to be more prescriptive about that, to help the best-in-show panel get the best-in-show.
Yeah, no, that's great. And I think you're absolutely right. That should feed through into net returns effectively. But I think there's probably a difference there as to whether that is systematically being applied to systematically and consistently deliver those net return superior performance or whether there was some luck in. So I guess by requiring a specific calling out of a systematic approach to responsible investment means that that might not just be a lucky five-year window or something, that actually there is a concerted process to managing external managers, to managing the investment approach, to considering there's risk in strategic asset allocation, as opposed to just someone fluked it.
Yep.
So I think that, but you're absolutely right. I think it should, but I'm happy to.
Which is important because at the moment we can only look at history.
Yeah, that's right.
Plus other factors, other qualitative factors around your governance or investment strategy to then guide, are you likely to reproduce that history going forward?
Yeah, and so the world that superannuation funds are investing into over the next coming decades is very different to the last.
Indeed, when you talk to some of the really smart CIOs that are looking at structural breaks in particular industry sectors around cash flows and performance, a lot of these are ESG factors.
Yep, exactly. They may not be called that, but that's precisely.
What would also be helpful for us to get is your kind of list across the Australian super fund spaces to who's doing responsible investing or ESG? Who, who's signed up?
Yep.
And who's, who's doing it well? Because we can sort of actually do our own, I'm looking at the person who might be doing this. We can actually look at then our distribution of performance over time, which we've created that others haven't done before. And then see if we can establish a correlation as well. So we'd like to see your international evidence base.
Yep.
But we might have a little go at doing our own little domestic evidence base.
That'd be great. And we just released about two weeks ago, an analysis of the top 50 largest superannuation funds in Australia. And we have a leaders list in that effectively of those we think have a very comprehensive approach to responsible investment. And that is a really diverse bunch of funds from faith-based investors to very large industry funds and the largest two retail-based funds as well. So we don't think it is something that can only fit within a certain type of superannuation fund either, which I think is an important element to.
I guess where one important distinction needs to be made, and this is something that we've talked about when we were looking at what's the requirement in the choice segment versus what's the requirement in the default segment is. Some superannuation members may be prepared to take some investment performance off the table for ethical investing. And that, as I understand, is quite distinct from responsible investing, that they don't need to be inconsistent. So they're not mutually exclusive, they do overlap. But sometimes an ethical investor might be prepared to take some, some returns off the table for ethical investing. Is that correct?
That can be the place, but certainly evidence would even support that ethical investing is just as likely to receive good risk-adjusted returns as well. So but yeah, no, but you're right in that distinction of the responsible versus ethical and the fact that there's not mutually exclusive. Like I think there's more of a grey zone today than there ever was in the past. But no, you're absolutely right. So there's, and certain segments there that would be willing to prioritise values and ethics over, over financial returns. Yep.
On then preaching what you practise and then applying that to our super system around more relevant information. I guess this is a trade-off in the world of good governance in ESG world is about disclosure.
Yeah.
So, and it's not just for the member, it's for informed agents, be media, analysts, academics, to be able to follow the money and be able to identify where problems may be emerging. So I guess what we found though is that the world of disclosure in super kind of hasn't delivered on the latter. And indeed then it's murky the former because the information that's there for the member, firstly, it's difficult to find. And two, once you get to it, it's just incomprehensible. I think we, we've had evidence from some of the academics that they've set as assignments for their third year finance students to find the dashboard and to understand the not-so-dashing dashboard. So do you sort of distinguish then between what's meaningful for members from a behavioural economics perspective versus what should be there for disclosure, for transparency and accountability for informed agents?
We do. So we're not, so I guess there are two elements to that. And it's interesting to think of for whom is the audience effectively for what part of information? And I think there's a lot of, like, much greater disclosure across a whole lot of factors is important for just informed agents interested in this industry. From a consumer perspective though, we are starting to see requirements coming to play. Just, there's a report from the UK government this week in fact, and one from the EU in terms of requiring pension funds to be writing annual statements on how they are asking their members of their preferences around sustainability, ethical issues, climate change related issues. So direct reporting and annual statements on how they're actually engaging their members on this. So I guess simplified in a sense as to how that comes through. I think there are, there are pros and cons of things such as full portfolio holdings disclosure. You know, 9,000 plus stocks, what does it have, meaningful is that? I think at a principles-based level, we believe really strongly that that is something that should be available to investors to understand where their money is being invested. But currently out of those top 50 funds in Australia, only six provide full portfolio holdings disclosure. And that's part of the legislation that's been held up in Australia. So there's that sort of how useful or, but I think for, you know, when you look at global markets, I believe Morningstar data says Australia's probably the worst out of 30 global markets on their, on their disclosure requirements around portfolios. So we really are leagues behind the rest of the world in terms of the amount of information you can get on your portfolio. So, so I think, but then when you talk about it at a dashboard level, I think there's more, still we find any information around responsible investment, ethical investment is buried deep, deep, deep in PDFs. It's often not very meaningful. I mean, we have a certification programme where we assess this to make sure it is meaningful and it's true to label. And it's hard to get the right information. So I think it's, it's buried. But we are starting to see dedicated reporting from some of the leading super funds on their responsible investing strategy is what it means. And importantly, what the outcomes are, any targets in place. So they've been much more accountable and I think that's sort of a big shift that's occurring now.
And I guess from our perspective, what we're trying to do is make sure that the information that goes to the member is what they need for a window of interest to help them be, make an informed decision.
Yeah.
And so we're not going to be overly prescriptive about that. We'll be very prescriptive about what disclosure should be for an informed agent. But for the member, we think that the regulator should work with the behavioural economists and the, and the people that do the choice surveys and understand the nudges of the world.
Yeah.
To identify what should be on a one-page my super dashboard. So unless there was a strong evidence base that the consumer, the member needed to understand, is my fund a terrific ESG investor? Or to understand, my fund will actually give me really strong, solid net investment returns over the long term of my working life. So you see, we're kind of.
I do, yeah. I mean, I think we put on, in a policy submission around that legislation that's around disclosure and dashboards, that there should be a requirement to disclose something around your responsible investment commitment at that dashboard level. We think this is one element of superannuation that unfortunately many Australians find this stuff pretty boring and dry. And this is one area where we have a chance to actually talk about some of the good impacts that are occurring from the capital allocation decisions being made by that two and a half trillion dollars out there. So by, by having a fund actually state upfront on a dashboard, a commitment that does exist and it is already endorsed, it is something that actually is meaningful in an organisation, potentially is one signal to a consumer that, okay, they're thinking about some stuff, there's some values alignment, there's a consideration of things.
And do you have evidence that, so partly what we've also tried to do is to understand what's important? What does the member value separate to an educative process for members going forward? But have you got evidence that suggests that members do value understanding or thinking that their good net investment returns are based on responsible investing? Is, is that something that you've got an evidence base you can point to for us?
So it's interesting. So we've done some consumer research here in Australia over the last few years. It was very clear, more so maybe it was the structure of the questions actually in the New Zealand consumer survey, that there is a belief that they want very good investment products, plus they want values alignment. Like they don't want a trade-off there and there is an expectation that there is not a trade-off there. So we do have consumers understand that there should not be a trade-off, which was pleasing to us because the traditional sort of mythology around this has been the trade-off kind of perspective. In terms of, yeah, it's probably something I'd like to have a look at and come back to you. And whether there's some indicators by proxy of that through some of the movements in the market that are occurring now. Like if you look, for example, at a lot of the startup small funds who have come to market recently. And we think, you know, there's nearly all of them are basing their marketing around values alignment, around sustainability, around a way you can actually engage much more strongly with Australians. And I think it is an indicator that Australians are willing to engage with super, are willing to think about and ask some questions. But we need to start with issues that they care about and think about in their daily life and make some explicit connections as to how that relates. And I think this provides potentially a really strong gateway to improve engagement with Australians with this.
The other area that would be helpful, because you're advising instos on what they should be looking for in terms of best practice with ESG. To some extent, what our regulators require of super funds in terms of disclosure is nearly like the role of an insto investor in saying, this is what we should be seeing super funds doing. Around related party is an area that we kind of struggled in terms of the disclosure of the incidence of related parties, the fees and costs associated with related parties. And was a business case really established to have that related party transaction be executed? Be good for us to kind of know what you see as best practice in the investments world? And do we see our super funds practising that with their disclosure to their members as their customers? Because that could maybe inform whether or not we strengthen what we expect the regulator to do in that space. Because nearly, you want the regulator to nearly be an ESG investor on behalf of the members in terms of what they require the super funds to do.
Yeah.
So if you could give us some guidance on where there might be gaps in terms of best practice, what you would expect in ESG world of an insto investor versus what the regulator is expecting of a super fund today?
Yeah.
Who's a unique investor on behalf of members who are compelled to give them their money?
Sure. Yeah, and I think we're seeing some emerging themes around that. That is, you know, how, yeah, how, how super funds are reporting on climate-related financial risks, et cetera, which we're starting to see through the task force for climate-related financial disclosures, some requirement and mandating that in certain jurisdictions to do better reporting. But yeah, there's certainly something we can come up with.
I guess I'm emphasising the G in ESG here. So while I agree ESG is really important for portfolio composition.
Yeah.
The G here for the super fund is what I'm getting at. If, if the regulator was an investor in a super fund today, would they give them a tick under the G?
Yeah, and I think that's variable and as.
We think so too, but you're the expert, so tell us where the gaps are on the G.
Yeah, so again, our recent report looks a lot at the disclosure from super funds, who's reporting what and how detailed that disclosure is. So we can certainly include some of that information.
The other part of the G that's kind of interesting then is around the trustee board.
Yep.
And the calibre of the trustee board. So we didn't kind of get into the, get into the world of recommending and mandating a number of independent directors, although we thought it makes a lot of sense in a world of conflicts and related parties that you'd want a critical mass of independent directors, but we don't mandate it. We then look through to the quality of the trustee board and how you assess the skills and make sure you've got the right skills today and going forward. And there's independent assessment of that performance of the board and the investment committee and their skills. Again, we've got some recommendations there. It'd be good for you to let us know whether or not we've gone far enough in terms of what's best practice about what's expected in the governance under that G in the institutional investor world today.
Sure.
That'd be great.
Yeah, and I think we, yeah, made comments to some of those elements in previous submissions and things. So yeah, we can definitely talk.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we're now at a stage where we've got, we're at the pointy end. We've got draft recommendations on the table. We need evidence to either strengthen them, change them, dilute them or leave them there.
Yeah.
So that'd be great.
Sure.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So can we leave you with all that wonderful homework?
Yeah, that's. Yeah, sure.
This is the part that we like.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but I think you can actually, you can really help us here.
Yeah, no, no, that's good.
Every time we're a bit light on, we've had some terrific help from some really smart people in academia and in the consulting community who, who know a lot about the coalface of governance here in Australia. But I guess you've got the added advantage if you're looking at it internationally as well in terms of what's best practice.
Sure, yeah, and there is a lot of movement on the legislative front around these kinds of elements internationally. Yeah, great, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, Simon. We appreciate your, your coming along and we look forward to your post-draft remarks.
Cheers.
Thank you. All righty, we are running outrageously ahead of schedule. How did, how did that happen? Although our next participant may have just arrived, which we'll find out in one moment. Good afternoon. Are you Mark McLeod from Roll It Super? Excellent, we're really pleased you're running early. Just take your time, settle in and just when you're ready, Mark, if you'd like to take a seat up the table. But we'll change your organisation from the Responsible Investment Association of Australasia to Roll It Super with the wave of a magic hand of a staff member.
Well, maybe.
Yes, yes. Don't underestimate your magic wave. I know. We've done it twice in two days, I reckon that's the thing. Yeah. Oh, it goes to the calibre of the participants. Nothing to do with us. Just wherever you'd like to sit. I'll let you pour some water slowly without. No pressure. Mark, thank you for asking to appear at our, our hearings today and welcome. Just for the purposes of the transcript, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and the organisation that you represent. And then if you'd like to make some brief opening remarks and then we can get into a bit of a chat with some questions.
Yeah, no problem. So I'm Mark McLeod, so I'm the founder of Roll It Super and we're a superannuation startup launching in a few months' time. In terms of our submission, I guess, I think the comment is we thought it was a fantastic report, very well researched and you know, really great summary of, of the sector. With the recommendations, our submission really focused on ensuring that private enterprise can innovate off the back of the recommendations. And we've seen that extremely well with, with other initiatives, whether it's Superstream or Simple Touch Payroll or Cleaning House Services or any of these initiatives. When this participation by the ATO government and private enterprise means that there's a bigger chance of getting universal participation in what the initiative is. And then ultimately, that stands to benefit members' interests as well. And so our submission really had a number of responses to specific guidance that you've provided. And whether it was silent on whether, I guess, private enterprise had an opportunity to innovate against that. Just some recommendations to put that in place, not just focusing on saying like portals or the like. So it was the general comment, but, but I think a fantastic initiative, particularly like this as a choice model. I think it's going to, you know, really good things for the, for the passive members of employer-sponsored plans.
Just before we get into questions, could you just explain your business a little bit better so we understand where you fit into the super system?
Yeah, absolutely. So, so we're looking at really how do we get people more engaged in this superannuation? And we start to look at the behavioural biases and some of the behavioural economics around that. And, you know, there's some, some pretty insurmountable challenges that people had. And really the biggest one is default bias where you can like do nothing, save yourself a really challenging and a difficult decision and just take what the employer provided you. So we look at that challenge and we looked at just the general challenges around getting people engaged in, in super. And then how can we get involved and sort of bridge the gap to get people engaged in this super and making active, healthy decisions towards where this super's going? So we start to look at the default model, which is predominantly how people are engaging and I guess purchasing super. We want to provide value for the employer and the employee by looking at the overall financial wellness of the employee. And as it related to this super, provide an easy way for them to understand their current fund and investment option and how they're tracked against every other possible default or choice fund and investment option in the market. And allow them to push a button and switch it and we'll take care of the, the switching in the admin around that. And we wanted to do that as an independent service, so we weren't getting commissions or any sort of, you know, bad sort of beacon of like sort of incentives for us to do that. So if we provide enough value, have the employer pay for that, then allow that free to employees and allow them to compare and switch at a push of a button and remove the friction out of the, of the comparison and switching process. So that's what we've built. We have every public offer fund available to employees, they can track their current fund and investment option against the market and allow them to initiate a rollover off the back of that to any other fund. So that's, that's the. So that's that's the the model as it relates to the super component of what we do. Um. And, you know, we looked at these changes and hopefully it means that we can accelerate people's, you know, getting actively involved in their super. And so we get big supporters of this, and if there's any way that we can, you know, we've got a couple of years of runway before this sort of starts to hit the market, and if there's a way that we can facilitate and educate people on that process, then, yeah, we'll be big supporters and and, you know, want to do that.
Could I just ask then, if you've looked at the report, you've seen our suggestions around the best in show list, um how do you see that facilitating your business model?
Yeah, so with employers and employees, there's often um services that they're already using. So with employees, they might have um internet sites, employee portal, other platforms that they're already using and engaging with. And having the assisted choice options and information available through all those portals and services they're already using is a very good way to get participation, as opposed to saying, look, until you've gone to my guide, then, you know, make a selection, then, you know, you can't sort of, you know, we don't want to have people defaulting sequentially into one of the shortlist. So you want to find ways to get to where people are already on. And so we look at the assisted choice model, and that creates a a shortlist that can be accessed via H R portals, sort of Slack ourselves. Um. There's a there's a range of things that people are already engaging with, and where private enterprise can can get access to the information and get access to help people make those decisions, then, you know, we want to make sure that that's facilitated.
So would that be, and I'm sorry if this is an ignorant question, but would that, would would you then be providing kind of I T solutions to join up what a business currently has with what the A T O might be offering?
Absolutely, yeah. So when L G B, you know, when um when Superstream came came along, as the A T O built a a small business clearinghouse, for example.
Yeah.
But it wasn't the only clearinghouse in the market, you know, Westpac had theirs and Superstore, so a poor bunch of them, right? Now, if if we just said the A T O is the only clearinghouse that can be used, then a lot of innovation, a lot of, you know, work and effort would have gone into employers changing the way they worked and wanted to use that new service. Wouldn't have to, because service providers stepped into that and then built, you know, easy to use frameworks and tools and and software to make that make that easy for everyone to go through that transition. Honestly, this is any difference. And there's some recommendations in there that maybe an employer employee or a member is, you know, expressly see where they want to go. Service providers have been in an easy position to be able to facilitate that through through the A T O or whatever services is centralizing their young, that those um agreements.
And then have you looked at some of any of the existing arrangements that super arrangements that the A T O has with things like Superstream, where businesses, some, you know, very small businesses in particular have been finding it difficult because they either don't use an electronic package or they have one that's not compatible? Have you looked at any of those existing arrangements and and facilitated any of those? Or is this more?
Yeah, so, yeah, so a lot of the um the new um accountancy packages and and payroll systems make this a lot, you know, a lot easier for for employers. I guess where they don't go is they don't go often go that extra mile and make it easy for members. Um. And that's especially as it comes to making decisions around where their super goes. So the a lot of them at the moment, services focused around the, you know, servicing employers. Um. There's not a lot of services that are servicing employees at the moment. And um, yeah, I think that's that's where there is innovation and opportunity.
And so I'm just trying to think in the way that uh we we're envisaging the centralized online service would work, that it that you rock up to your employer and on your first day they say, right, I've got this electronic electronic form that needs to be filled in, and it's going to give you a drop down box of the best in show or whatever. And we're conscious that the A T O have already mentioned to us issues around difficulties where the employee might be inserting details that would be on the employer's computer that maybe they wouldn't necessarily want the employer to have some of that. There might be things that they're looking at and seeing that they wouldn't want as a history on a computer in the workplace. Is that the kind of problem that you'd be looking to overcome?
Yeah. So so there's services that can be, you know, the the privacy and the um information can be secure for the employee that the employee doesn't have access to. But those decisions can still be facilitated through to the A T O, for example. And so the employer might offer that service up to the employees, but the login and the information that's provided in there is is confidential to the employee.
And that's the kind of add on that you'd be providing and providing at a cost to the employer, but saying there'll be benefits for you and your workforce in making this available.
Yeah, that's right. And so I guess, you know, our our model would be to have the assisted choice list, but also we'll make it easy to find choice of fund as well. So whether it's it's ethical or or indexed or, you know, my super or growth or whatever it may be, that might have other needs that aren't on that assisted choice list. But, you know, we'll definitely be putting that out there and saying, well, here's the assisted choice list, and then here's all the others as well. Yeah. And just make sure that these are, you know, all of the the information is symmetry and make sure that, you know, um people can find what what's value to them.
So Mark, with the work that you're doing at the moment, and obviously, I guess, helped assisted by our assisted employee choice model, um you're helping the, so you, an employer hires you, you come into the workplace, and with I T solutions, you help their workers make their own choices. So this isn't corporate super, this is just an employer wanting to help their members make a choice because they don't want to make.
And and support employees to find the right super fund and investment option for them.
And is there anyone else in the market that's doing?